Meeting for Monday, August 14th. If everyone would stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for showing up, everybody. I know it's been a long day. Let the record show that we have Board members Jeff Hires, Tracy Rankin, Ryan Osmus, and Lee Sekilian present. We need a motion for the adoption of the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. One second. We've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Tracy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. So far, so good. Approval of bills. Jeff, did you have a chance to look them over?
Yes, ma'am, and everything looks in order.
You need to turn your mic on, please.
I will make a motion to approve the bills.
Second. Thank you. We've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Tracy. All in favor? Aye. Four zero. Okay, now we have a special presentation, the Gold Star Award, and I don't really have any, I don't have any information. Oh, here we go.
I have many hats in the community, and so right now I'm here as a local coordinator for the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition. I don't know if you had something you wanted to say first. Do you want me to go ahead?
Go for it.
Okay. And I was here to congratulate you on being the 10th school district in Kansas and receiving the Gold Level Award for Breastfeeding Employee Support Award. And I actually had to collaborate with about 10 schools. Oh, my name's Carmen Valverde. Sorry. I said what I did, but I didn't say my name. That's what happens when you get nervous out of nowhere, but, and so you guys would be the 10th school district, and there's actually a list online in the Business Case for Breastfeeding website that lists all the school districts in Kansas. And it's so important that we had, that, you know, the employees have your support because feeding your baby is a supply and demand kind of thing, and if the mother is not expressing her milk throughout the workday, her supply starts to drop, therefore she can't feed her baby. So, thank you so much for supporting the moms. And like I said, I had to collaborate with about 10 school buildings. Jason and Tara did a fabulous job. They are very supportive in doing everything it takes for, you know, the school district to have what the employees need to stick around. This also ensured that USD 443 had a lactation policy that was in compliance with the Pump Act that just passed. So not only is this beneficial for the employees, it's beneficial for the school district. And then just the benefits of having this policy implemented is increased retention of employees. Mothers don't have to choose between staying home, you know, having a job or staying home to feed their babies. And then decreased healthcare costs because we know if the mother and the baby are healthy, you know, there's going to be less use of that medical services. And then just being a competitive employer that is willing to do what it takes for the employees to have what they need. Is there anything you'd like to add?
The one thing I, sorry, touched the wrong button. I would just like to tell Carmen, thank you. We didn't have to do a whole lot of work from our office's perspective to get this thing moving. Carmen kind of drove the whole thing for us. The Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition provided us with the sample policy language that was written by KASB and eventually adopted by the Board. So they made it very easy for us to make these changes, and we wanted to work with our employees and alongside them. They have also provided us with some very special bags and different things from their organization to provide to our mothers who are needing a cooler bag or different things like that. So really, the goal is just to be more proactive throughout the whole process and try to get those conversations occurring up front instead of after the fact and providing our employees with that place to express milk that is not a restroom or is not someplace where they might get walked in on and those types of things. This also led to some other conversations about how our medical plan also offers the coverage of the purchase of some different items to actually have this occur. So there's been some other positives that have come out of this conversation, so I appreciate Carmen and the fact that she reached out about this about a year ago, and we are glad to continue to work and make our organization thrive and do the best we can for our employees.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you both. Thanks, Carmen. All right, we are ready for recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the Board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The President shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. It all, everybody looks like home crew tonight, but if you do want to address the Board, please approach the podium. Seeing nobody jump up, we'll move on. We're ready for the consent agenda, which includes the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, approval of minutes from our July 10, 2023 Board of Education meeting, approval of Head Start Cola and Quality Improvement Supplemental Grant, approval of Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program Grant Award, 443 Nutrition Department, approval of Open Outdoors for Kids Grant Award, Fort Larned, Fort Larned Old Guard Sunnyside, and the same for Sewell, approval of KSDE Mental Health Intervention Team Grant Award, approval of multiple donations to Dodge City Middle School and Dodge City High School with the attached list of names of donors. Information only, item I is informational update on engine replacement bus number 205, approval of 2023-24 Sunnyside Elementary Pre-Kindergarten Student Parent Handbook, approval of 2022-23 Annual Site Council Reports for Dodge City High School and Comanche Middle School, approval of contract with Instruction Coaching Group, Michelle Harris, approval of Memorandum of Understanding with Dodge City Family YMCA, approval of Arctic Wolf Security Services Renewal, approval of Microsoft Renewal 2023, and finally, approval of revisions to the Mental Health Intervention Procedure and Reentry Plan. Any questions on any of those items? No?
I'd make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
All right, we've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. All right, we are ready now for new business. First off is Human Resources. Jason?
So we have four items on the agenda from the Human Resources Office this evening. The first one is to request the ratification of the 22, or 2023-2024 negotiated agreement with the Teachers Union. I will share, this was not in the consideration sheet, but as of the vote this afternoon, I'm going to read a text, there was a 66% turnout of the certified staff to vote, and of that 66% turnout, there was a final tally of 240 yes to nine no with a 96.39 yes on the passing of the negotiated agreement. So I know I had several hyperlinks and attachments in the consideration sheet. Are there any questions anyone has about any of that information or would like for me to go through a brief recap of any of that information before you prepare to vote to ratify?
That is an outstanding percentage, so congratulations and job well done.
One second. We've got a motion by Ryan and a second by Tracy. All in favor? Aye. Four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you and your team for all the work on that.
We appreciate it. The second request this evening, and I hope this is the last time that I see this policy for a while, because we apparently, or I apparently, made an assumption that I should not have through the course of last year when we made an amendment to the GAN-R policy. In November, I came to you and requested to be able to pay the travel time for the classified non-exempt staff and the nine months contracted staff for when they had to travel outside of their normal working hours or contract time. I never thought to ask anyone, do we actually currently pay for the seat time? It was just an assumption that we already paid people to go to PD. If we were, if it was district initiated and we were requiring them to go, I didn't even think that we wouldn't have a policy or procedure that said we were paying them to actually spend the time in the professional development. So this final request is to amend that language that was added last November to include the actual paying of the seat time. Now that we pay for the travel time, we're going to pay for the seat time, too. So I apologize that I assumed we already paid for the seat time, but in digging into it, Deb and I spent several hours comparing everything that had ever gone to the Board on this policy or the regulation from this policy and could not find anything where the actual seat time was included.
I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
Motion by Tracy and a second by Jeff. All in favor? Aye. Four zero.
Thank you. And I do want to just reemphasize one last time publicly that that is for district-initiated professional development. It's not for any request that comes up. It's for when we determine that we need somebody to attend something. The third item we have this evening is the approval of an adjustment to the association dues. In the Administrative Policy and Procedure Handbook, there are guidelines for how association dues are laid out at the district level for administration or supervisors. What this consideration sheet is doing is requesting some flexibility with the budget that is provided within that account. Sometimes there are situations, I'll use mine, for example, where I am a member of several state organizations. I'm actually going to be the vice president or was voted in already to be the vice president of our state organization for human resources this year. And then I also like to be involved in the local agencies like Southwest Kansas SHRM, which is the chapter out here for human resources, and the national, and so what that would do is that would put my association dues up above what is allotted currently for a position like mine. However, there may be another position at the administrative level where their dues are $300 under where they would normally need to be because they're only in one or two organizations or only need to be in one organization. So the purpose for that request is to increase certain levels to the $400 level from the $350 level, but ultimately provide the district cabinet the flexibility to spend the money that is allotted in that fund for overages in areas if they occur and it is approved at the cabinet level to make that payment. I hope that makes sense. It's not an increase in the total amount that's going to be spent on administrative dues and fees. It's just possibly allotting it different when there are certain individuals or certain positions not utilizing that so others don't have to come up with that money out of pocket so much.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jeff, I mean, sorry, motion by Ryan, second by Jeff. All in favor? Aye. Four zero.
Thank you. And then finally, and there was a first read on this at the last board meeting, and that seems like forever ago, and unfortunately, I wasn't here anyway. So basically, what this agreement is doing is trying to continue to give us, or give our current employees who have caught the bug for education and teaching a route to continue to work towards certification through that scholarship offer that we currently make. It's basically increasing the current scholarship opportunity, which is $1,000 for up to three semesters to $2,000 for up to four semesters. Now, that being stated, it's not just handing them $2,000 per semester, and that's kind of the unique part of this whole agreement, is the first thing I have to do is get ahold of the universities and be able to set up with their financial aid department or with their business office an agreement, an MOU, where we can work together and we can have the proper legal paperwork in place for them to share information and for us to only make payments on that person's account up to that amount. It doesn't mean that it's going to be that amount every single time because they have to take off any financial aid, any other scholarships, anything like that before we would make that full $2,000 payment on somebody's behalf. Right now, currently, I have been able to work out agreements, obviously with Newman, who happens to sit in our backyard, Fort Hayes. I am currently in the process of working on one with Wichita State University. That was a new development this year. I have continued to reach out to several other universities in the state to see if we can get these things in place so we can continue to provide these scholarships for employees that are working towards first-time certification as a teacher and are already working for our school district.
Let me do, go ahead, Jeff.
No, I was just going to ask, what is our agreement with them as far as what are we getting back? I mean, how many years?
So it's built into the agreement, and I'll be completely honest with you, I have not looked at it since we started. Currently, it's two years on the scholarship opportunity that we currently offer. It's a two-year commitment. If I remember right, when I went through this whole thing, we increased that to, I think it's a three- or five-year commitment in the new contract. And currently, the process for them receiving that scholarship is I email them a form, they email it back. This, if passed, this would be a face-to-face sit-down meeting with myself and every one of those people because this is intended to be more of a contract
Right.
between us and them than it is a scholarship agreement. And that's why this one happens to be four pages long, whereas the other ones, one page. Here's what we're offering you. Do you want to accept it?
This is not part of the negotiated agreement at all, is it?
No. This is actually, this is actually, and we do have language in there, I shouldn't even use the term "contract" probably, but it's an agreement between us and a non-certified staff member that we are going to allow some financial commitment as long as they make a time commitment to us.
Let me, do we have this for the fall enrolled?
So as of right now, today, we will probably start school with around 75 long-term subs, which are, and not all of these people that would be utilizing this program are long-term subs, so to speak. Several of them will be paraeducators who are already working in classrooms with students, and then they can take coursework. And we also offer tuition reimbursement opportunities and different things like that for them as well. This just helps get them kick-started into moving towards becoming certified teachers.
And I guess I didn't ask my question, I didn't state my question clearly enough. Thank you for saying that, though. That's not necessarily what I was asking, but that's interesting information. So last year, we had 13.
Oh.
Yeah, how many do we have this fall?
So right now, in the program, we were down to like six, I believe, with Newman specifically. We have a few more that are going through, I think three currently, that are working on restricted teaching license through Fort Hayes. We have two brand-new employees, the Kansas Registered Teacher Apprentice Program. We are piloting that this year. That has been a real challenge to get in a place, but we now have two individuals working through Wichita State University with that pilot program as well. So we're probably currently right around 10 to 11 employees that are in one of those programs. Now, that doesn't include, like, those 13 are still in the program. So the 13 I originally reported on, plus now we have recruited over the summer and through the course of last spring, we now have that many more people that have come on board into these programs. So as some graduate out and become licensed teachers, our goal is to continue to recruit new talent into the programs.
Thank you, Jason. Move for approval.
Okay. One second. Motion by Ryan and a second by Tracy. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Business Services with Hammer.
First tonight, what I'm bringing to you, this is part of the negotiated agreement that you just approved, not in its entirety, but part of the items that were agreed to when we talked with the DCNEA was an extra $1,500. We're calling it a premium pay bonus. So now, obviously, for them, they were just negotiating for the certified staff. What I'm bringing to you would encompass all 443 employees, so there's a little bit of difference, but just want you to understand that there is a tie to that. Doesn't affect the base pay, but it is in addition to all the other things that were actually written into the negotiated agreement. Does that make sense so far? Okay. So what I'm actually asking you to approve is a $1,500 premium pay bonus for all 443 employees to be paid out of the ESR funds. And we had to establish some criteria, so we kept it pretty simple. You have to be an employee with the district on September 5th, so actually, if you haven't hired on yet as a pair, you still have time. But if you're an employee on September 5th and you're still employed when the bonus checks are written, which in this case will be on February 23rd, then you will receive that $1,500 bonus gross pay. So again, this would be funded out of ESR funds, not the normal at-risk or general fund like most salaries are. It's exactly what we did last year, a little bit different criteria, a little bit different dollar amount. Last year's was 1,200, this one is at 1,500. So any questions on the criteria or how that came about?
Nope, I'm just glad we can take this money that we have and invest it back in the staff.
Well, we can do it this year, and then we're pretty well done.
Right. That money's gone.
Yep.
Understood. I'd make a motion to approve the ESR funds being used for a, when I read this first, I thought you were talking about insurance premium. But for the $1,500.
One second. All right, we've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Tracy. All in favor? Aye. Four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, pretty standard, just a year's worth of copy paper. We get three semi-loads a year. This year, the low bidder was $82,530. Just, I guess, the one bit of good news is last year, we bought three semi-loads and it was 112,000. There was a paper shortage at the time, so don't see it very often, but prices actually went down, so kind of want to jump on that and take advantage of it. But pretty straightforward, not much to it. There was a lower bid, but it wasn't of the quality that we asked for, and that's noted on the side there, so any questions about that?
I'll second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Jeff. All in favor? Aye. Four zero.
Okay.
This is my favorite of the day, I just want you to know.
One coming up?
Yeah, the one coming up.
Okay. Well, I'll try to explain the one coming up. So every year, we've kind of allocated a certain amount of money to replace our instruments over a three-year period. So we don't, you can kind of change that amount as long as it averages out to a certain amount over three years. We did the bids, I don't know if it was at the last meeting or the one before, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, I did not review those. And it's a little confusing because we bet out a whole list, and then you've got woodwinds, you've got percussion, what's it, strings. And then when we get the bids back, we don't necessarily take everything on that list. Then we pick and choose, okay, here we have a dollar amount, so, you know, we left a few of the items that we got bid prices back on. So that's what makes it a little bit confusing to compare apples to apples because we're still trying to work within a certain budget and get the best dollar for the value. So it is a little trickier than just looking at the bottom line. What was different last year, or I'm sorry, this past go-around, we had a company bid who we'd never done business with before, but the state is very specific on our bid process, and I had Clayton and his team review this to make sure what we did was right, and it wasn't, so that's why I'm back here tonight. So when we put the specs out, it's very precise, you've got to spec it, you've got to establish the specs, so how you word the specs is important. You have to have a sealed bid, you can't email it in, it's got to be sent. You can hand walk it in, or you can mail it in, it's got to be opened to the public. So a lot of specific criterias, but on this one, we stated that we wanted Yamaha or equivalent. So we didn't quite word it maybe the way that we had intended to. So went back and forth with Clayton a couple of times and feel like we need to award this to the ones that met the specs and did have the lowest bid. Somebody we hadn't done business with before, you know, the band director's not terribly crazy about this, but we had a conversation, understands what we did wrong, so we will, well, for one, we'll do this, we'll try it out, maybe we'll be pleasantly surprised, but I don't know that. I assured him so that the dollars that we save here will go into the budget for his purchases next year. I mean, you know, here we are, starting school in a couple of days, so we kind of need some instruments. So what I'm really asking you to do is go back and award the bid to BAC, who was the low bidder per the specs that we wrote at that time. Does that make sense what we're doing?
So originally, they didn't meet the specs?
Originally, they met the specs.
Oh, they did meet the specs?
They met them from the start. We didn't necessarily word it the way maybe we would have wanted to.
Okay.
And so we got some coaching on that, and I mean, we'll try them. Like I said, maybe we'll be pleasantly surprised, but if we're not, we'll just spec it how we intended to be.
Okay. If they meet the specs and it's cheaper.
But it wasn't the brand that the band director wanted.
But it's not the equivalent to the Yamaha? Is that what you were?
No, it is, well, I suppose that depends on who you talk to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. If we'd have just said Yamaha,
Yeah.
we'd have probably been okay.
Oh, okay.
So we didn't say Yamaha. I mean, is a Ford equal to a Chevy? Depends on who you talk to, so.
Fair enough.
Yep. Yep. I'll make a motion. Okay.
Second.
We've got a motion by Tracy and a second by Ryan. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and I believe last on the list, nope, two more. Next is just bathroom partitions. One of these, the bathroom partitions for Beaston was already on the Capital Outlay list. The bathroom partitions for the visitors' bathroom at Memorial Stadium, so it's on the east side, it was not on the Capital Outlay list. It was very early on, it was in the plan for Memorial Stadium, but at that time, to totally redo that and put in the ADA stalls and everything was close to half a minute. ADA stalls and everything was, was close to half a million dollars, and we didn't want to spend that much money on the first phase at that time. So, we're winding that down. It would be nice to fix those up, but we're not going to do a total remodel of the visitors' bathroom. So, we're just, we're gonna, we're gonna paint them, we're gonna redo the floors, and we're gonna redo the bathroom stalls. We should actually come in under budget on the final phase of Memorial Stadium. So, we, we have the money. We didn't include it in any of the phases because we wanted to get through and see where we were. So, I put that on here, but I just wanted to let you know how that came to pass. It was on again, off again, and now we'd like to go ahead and do that, but we don't want to do a whole remodel of the visitors' bathroom over there, if that makes sense. So both of these would come out of capital outlay.
I'll make your motion to approve.
One second.
Motion by Tracy and a second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero.
Thank you. Okay, last is taking care of the accident that happened over at Northwest. It's been an interesting summer. For quite a while, we couldn't get anybody to even bid on it. And we had problems with the insurance. I shouldn't say we had problems with the insurance, there was just a lot of unknowns out there. Nobody was being hard to get along with, there was just no information to deal with. Since that time, we put that out for bid. It looks like there's going, so, so this is, in a sense, an insurance settlement. It's not a capital outlay project, however, the insurance isn't going to cover all of the costs that are associated. So right now, our insurance EMC is going to write us a check less our fifty-thousand-dollar deductible, then they will deal with that person's insurance. So, in all likelihood, we will get another check back, but it's doubtful that it will be enough to cover all of the damage. There were two other vehicles damaged, not just ours. So, it's, nobody's sure what, what that will settle for. So, but for now, we got to get that fixed. So, what I'm asking for is permission to be able to write Bart's Construction a PO for the ninety-three thousand dollars to, to get it fixed. We will pay for that out of contingency. We will get insurance checks in, and, and actually, EMC's arrived today, but it could be six months to a year before we get settlement with the other insurance company. So, I expect another check, but the amount that that will come in at, I have no idea at this time. But for now, we just want to get that, that going. Once they get approval, he said, five to six weeks to, to get that done, so.
Is that going to hinder school?
They have a Plan B, it's just, they have another classroom, it's not ideally where they would like to put, it's a classroom, it's not a hallway, but it, it, it's not the classroom that they would prefer.
No, that's great. Oh, yeah. Subrogation is always fun and lengthy. I'd make a motion, we approve the Northwest repairs.
Second.
We've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Tracy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero. Thanks, Hammer.
Thank you. As a former saxophone player and on behalf of band instructors everywhere, I just want to be clear, there is no equivalent to a Yamaha saxophone. Nothing like that sweet sound. All right, we had a great day today. We've had a lot of things going on. I hear a lot of positive feedback. Our guest speaker was obviously a hit, and our youth performing to begin these ceremonies was a hit, and our speakers were on point. So, I was very pleased with how today followed through, and, and so I think, I appreciate your attendance as well. I wanted to say that to the board. A couple of items I wanted to go over, and I ask for input from the gallery if I miss any point here, but I do want to talk a minute. If you haven't had the chance before chaos sets in, drive around the high school and see the new parking lot. Everything that was asphalt is now concrete, and it is marvelous. And it's, it's just fantastic, if you can remember what it was like and, and how you were dodging potholes, et cetera. And to have that all done and in place is really a, a wonderful addition to our schools. The classrooms are coming along well. Hammer might have something to add because I know he went over for a tour, but there, there were a couple of items we had to get cleared through the fire marshal and that sort of thing. And interestingly enough, the fire marshal had approved before the classrooms were built, and then once he inspected with the classrooms being built, there were some additions he wanted, not in the new classrooms, but because of the old classrooms. But we got caught up on that, too. I think we added seven or eight fire alarms is basically what we did. Correct? All right. So, that's coming along nicely. Carpet was put in, and carpet was put in everywhere, but one school happened to be overlooked, but that's understandable in light of everything that's going on, and they're catching up at Central with the carpet in the hallway. We made mention of Miller today, talking about the playground, and it, it is really something that, all the way back when David Stubblefield was a grade schooler, he remembers clearly the rock playground, and, and that's now turf and grass with sprinkler system put in. So hopefully, that takes hold and goes very well. So, I'm excited about that. As I'm excited about Memorial Stadium and the progress that we've made there, which also includes the parking, which connects to Bright Beginnings, we've been a little nervous, but things have came around very well. The last couple of construction meetings, a lot of progress has been made. A shout-out to our local contractors and the, the work that they've done, and I think it's something, not only are you going to be proud of, but it's going to sustain for many years to come. It's just going to be fantastic. And I know when you first agreed to that, you were worried about all that for a parking lot, but when you see the functionality of how that's going to work, I think it will be well, well worth it. If you drive down First Street and look over at Memorial Stadium, please keep an eye on the road, but it is fun to look over there and to see the improvements of that stadium and the press box and, and all of that. So, very excited about that. We have enrollment going on, and every day I check, and every day the numbers keep going up. We are currently at, right at seven thousand, two hundred and forty-seven students. That doesn't include the two hundred that are going to Sacred Heart. So, as far as total students in, in Dodge City city limits, about seven thousand, five hundred kids going to school. So that, that's pretty amazing. Couple of interesting facts to me. You have to go all the way down to the kindergarten class before you find the class below five hundred. This year, it appears, everything's subject to change until September twentieth, but this year, it appears that our high school numbers may cross the twenty-one-hundred mark. Two years ago, we crossed the two thousand mark. So, we're seeing growth at that level with certainty. I am keeping an eye on, our kindergarten numbers were at four thirty-three currently at kindergarten. When we started and I first shared my concern, we were below four hundred. So, we've gone up considerably. Usually, by this time, we're at five hundred, just like all the other classes. So, now, I've been told, and it remains to be seen, that next year, we'll see a much larger class, maybe larger than five hundred, but that's speculation. So, I, I found those numbers interesting, and as I said, nothing matters until September twentieth. Just felt obligated to try to keep you informed as we look at the progress in the district enrollment-wise. Want you to know this, too. We had four students, I believe, Matt Turner, four, from Sacred Heart, expressed interest in participating in junior high football. Because of that number, three were seventh graders, one was an eighth grader, we didn't want to leave some in a situation by themselves. So, they actually had, unbeknownst to me, worked out at DCMS over the summer already, so we've left them there. What we weren't ready for was today at checkout, we had two homeschool kids show up. And I, I don't know the law well, and I'm the first to admit that I'm not crazy about this law, but it is the law, so I've got to do it. We had set a date to enroll, and I don't know how we're supposed to advertise that. I don't know how you advertise to homeschool kids on that, and then they just show up. Well, it's past the date, but yet it's the first year, so we're trying to figure out how we're going to get the word out, what we're going to do to make this work. And so I think we, so, okay, I'd heard two. And so I think we're just taking it. But, but that brought to our attention some flaws in this whole process, and I believe it was a volleyball player, wasn't it? So, we'll probably take that and just make it work.
Good.
I know, I know that there is a, like a homeschool, like, group or coalition, maybe we could get in touch with them and ask them to help share the word.
Yeah, we can try that. I'm old-school, and I told the board this, and I still believe extracurricular activities are extra. And, and, and the law has changed it to where it's a right for every citizen in our community for their child to participate in sports. And then I, then I've got to go do all this, or we have to go do all this extra work, and it's frustrating because it, it's a benefit of the kids that are in class together and all of that. So, we'll make it work. I just wanted you to know, that's what's going on. Talked about it today in the message, but I'd written this last week, so I'm going to go through it anyway, but I just, I, I want you to appreciate the value and use of the Civic Center. It's just amazing how many events that we've held in the last couple of weeks, and how being connected to the district office really works well. And so, that's kudos to the board for making that decision, and the connectivity of the facilities is wonderful, and the improvements that I talked about earlier also, I'm very excited about. We have a big day on September eighth. We're hoping that all the construction at Memorial Stadium is to a point where we can have a huge celebration. We'll be hearing more about that at our next board meeting. We anticipate being able to have a big night that night to kind of showcase the grand opening, and that will include honoring all of those that were involved in the process. And I wanted to let you know this in case anybody asks, but we only lack the signs for the different bus numbers on the transfer station, and then we will relocate back to the original location. I want to tell you how wonderful the city fire department was in working with letting us move the transfer station up to that parking lot, and how that was able to provide the needs that we had. So, I, I publicly thank them for allowing us that time. We'll get those signs up, and we'll get it cleaned up, and hopefully, when the buses roll, we'll have the original transfer station back. Then one other shout-out related to transportation, and this is phenomenal if you've ever been through the process, but every one of our buses, and I think we're about sixty-four strong, passed inspection, first time through. That, that's a credit to the Transportation Department of the nth degree. Having been a former transportation director and hiring people to have the screwdrivers ready because a, a light can jiggle loose before the highway of drooling gets there. And, so that's a big deal. And, and I don't take it lightly, and I want you to know that, that's a celebration. So, next time you see Diana or one of the transportation employees, tell them that was a good deal. That concludes the superintendent's roundup.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to Board of Education Member District Responsibilities. Park and Rec Advisory Board, Ryan, do you have anything?
Our meeting was rescheduled, so we won't meet till next month.
Okay. Bright Beginnings Head Start, Tammy's on that. Is there anything that we need to know at this point? Okay. Special Education, Jeff?
Raina said today that we're up and running and still looking for a few positions, but we're off to a, we're off to a good start. Tammy is my alternate tomorrow. She will have her first meeting. Have a funeral, but, but I enjoyed, I was able to go to the special education convocation, and, and as Lisa did this morning, as President of the Board, share our appreciation for their work. And it was, it was, it was a very good time, and I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Thank you. Anything on the legislative end that we need to know, Dr. Durkson? Capital Outlay, I assume?
We haven't met yet.
Spent the money.
Yep. Nothing on Calendar Committee, I would assume as well. And I'll make sure Jared's aware that he's signed up to review district bills prior to our September board meeting. Announcements, August seventeenth will be the first day of classes for K-12 students. August twenty-second is the first day of school for preschool students. And then August twenty-eighth will be our first noon meeting of the year at Miller Elementary at twelve noon. Are there items for future board meetings and/or additional information that we need? Nope. Okay, we are in need of an executive session for discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Fifteen minutes, Dr. Durson?
Yes, ma'am, fifteen minutes, and I would request myself, Jason Scheck, and the attorneys.
Okay. All right, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make your motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
And Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
You guys go home and get some rest.